It's not a good sign. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this continuation of the second budget hearing. This is the City of Boynton Beach City Commission meeting. Today's Wednesday, September 27, 2023, and the time is now 6:00 PM. Let's begin with the roll call. Let's turn to our city clerk.
Mayor Penzerga?
Here.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Commissioner Woodrow Hay, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Angela Cruz. Let's all stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather this afternoon in great city of Boynton Beach, Florida, we unbelieve invoke your presence and guidance at this special city commission meeting. Bless us with wisdom and compassion and unity as we deliver on matters that impact our beloved community. Grant us, Lord, the insight to make decisions that promote the well-being of all residents. May our action be guided by justice, fairness, and the spirit of cooperation. We ask for your blessings upon our city, its residents, and all those who serve it. Help us to create a verbal, vibrant, and harmonious place for all of us to live, work, and play. Is it in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ we do pray? Let every heart say amen.
Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. As always, with all of our meetings, the same rules of civility and decorum apply. Speakers must be first addressed by the chair and not interrupt a speaker. Public comments must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Disruptive behaviors, yelling, stamping of feet, and similar behaviors are prohibited. Insults, personal attacks are likewise strictly prohibited. So please govern yourselves accordingly. We're going to move on to agenda approval, additions, deletions, and corrections to the agenda. I'll begin on my right with Commissioner Cruz if there's anything.
No, I'm not. That's for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Nothing.
Commissioner Hay?
None.
Commissioner Kelly?
No, thank you.
Seeing none may have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I heard a motion from Commissioner Cruz. I heard a second from Vice Mayor Turkin. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, ayes have it. Motion passed unanimously. We're now moving on to section two, informational items by members of the city commission. Let's begin with Commissioner Kelly.
Mayor, I do not have any disclosures. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Hay, informational items or disclosures?
No information items made.
All right. Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
Commissioner Cruz?
Talked to some residents and city staff about item 10A.
All right. Thank you. We're going to move on now to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes per person, and if you would like to speak, now is the time to approach the podium. Seeing no one approaching the podium, we are going to go to those... Oh, was that a hand up? Was that a hand? Okay, all right. After we conclude with those in person, we will go to those online. Please state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having this meeting on time. It's not always the case with some city commissions. My name is Joseph Brenner. I'm the Director of Organizing and Bargaining for the SEIU Florida Public Services Union. I wanted to do a dual commendation of the way that the city administration has conducted both a professional-spirited round of collective bargaining on behalf of the blue and white-collar employees, many of them were sitting here. But in addition to that, obviously, you know, we're talking annual wage increases. I want to appreciate the direction that city management administration has done in making sure that some of the decisions made historically, which have led Boynton Beach to be, you know, a little undercut as far as the wages, general wages for the employees, we're starting to see a new trend in a direction that makes the city of Boynton Beach much, much more competitive with general employees all across the rest of the state and the Palm Beach area specifically. So I wanted to commend that direction. Obviously, I know that these are decisions that don't come without a severe price tag, and they do require the direction of city management to, you know, to allocate these funds that help make sure that we have talented employees that continue to service the city's residents. So that being said, just wanted to make sure that, you know, any decisions we've made that effectively can help enhance the work experience of our employees, both all the union members that I represent, as well as the non-represented general employees across the state, sorry, across the city. We look forward to, you know, working and fostering a deeper relationship with city administration, even though we've obviously gone in a tremendous direction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I see no one else approaching the podium. We're now going to go to those online. Manny, do we have anyone with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
With that, public audience is now closed. We're moving on to administrative community support funds. We have one request here coming from Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Cruz, let's begin with you. If there's any questions or comments, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
No comments. Just motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cruz. There is a second. I believe the first one was Vice Mayor. Are there any further discussions from my colleagues? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passed unanimously. We're now moving on to public hearing. Unfinished business, section 10A, proposed resolution number R23-134. This is an amendment to resolution number R23-108, annual comprehensive fee schedule rate changes. This item is before us again because, as we discussed in the previous meeting, there was some back and forth and questions about setting the actual percent increase in the fees from the utilities department. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to call up staff, if you could begin your presentation, to reintroduce this item, and then we'll begin with discussion thereafter.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Mara Fredrickson, Director of Financial Services. Tonight's resolution is to review the comprehensive fee schedule and the rates associated with the utility water. We do have a presentation for you from our rate consultant, Ryan Smith, and our Director of Utilities, Pranam Kalkat.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and everybody in the audience. I'm really appreciative of some of our utility staff that have taken the time to come attend a meeting because it impacts them. Want to introduce Ryan Smith, who is our rate consultant. He has over 13 years of experience in the utility industry, and he's been providing rate, financial, and data consulting services to over 100 municipalities for water, wastewater, and stormwater. And these utilities are throughout southeast Florida, as well as other southeast states. Ryan is a project manager for Riper Water Analytics, where he oversees the southeast regional practice. Ryan holds a bachelor's degree in accounting from the University of Central Florida and serves as Vice President for the Florida AWWA Finance and Rates Committee. And Ryan is a Florida native, too. So, welcome, Ryan. Manny, can you put this... Just let him know, and he'll...
Just say next slide. Yep.
Thank you very much for having me. Once again, my name is Ryan Smith. I'm with Riper Water Analytics. I've been doing the, working with the city over the last, really, like, since the beginning of the year, looking at developing a financial plan, really what's called a rate study for the utility, where we kind of plan out, hey, here's our expenditures, here's what our requirements are for the system, and how are we going to come up with a funding plan to meet those needs. Now, the first slide that I'm showing you, these are some basic utility statistics about your system and your utility system. You provide service to over 120,000 residents. You operate two water treatment facilities. You have almost 860 miles of pipe in the ground, 169 lift stations, 146 full-time employees, and our annual operating budget is approximately $60 million. Now, the last three bullets are the ones I really want to kind of focus on. The first one is our original infrastructure cost, the cost that we paid to actually install all of our assets into the ground. Right now, we have spent over $413 million on the infrastructure that's used to provide water, wastewater, and stormwater service to our constituents. But of that asset, of all those assets, the average asset age of what, how long it's been in the ground is approximately 31 years old. Now, utility assets, they have a longer service life typically, but, you know, 20 to 30 years, and we're kind of approaching that end of that useful service life. Now, in today's dollars, if we were to take those costs, that original dollar value, $413 million, and inflate it to today, those assets could be worth close to $1 billion, if not over. Next slide, please. Now, the next slide I want to talk about is our historical rate adjustments. We went back and we did a little bit more digging to look at how have rates changed over the last 12 years, and that's what's presented here. And really, rates and inflation have generally tracked pretty consistently up until about the pandemic. Since that point in time, right around 2020, 2021, we've seen a skyrocketing in inflation, where our rates have generally stayed flat since 2020. Now, inflation really impacts us in two ways, right? It increases our operating costs, but really where it has the bigger impact is on capital reinvestment and infrastructure reinvestment. And when we talk about that billion dollars that you potentially have in the ground in today's dollars, replacing those assets, repairing them, dealing with regulatory requirements, that's really adding significant increase in the burden that needs to be recovered from rates. And that's really what's presented here on this chart. Next slide, please. Now, how do we set rates? This is a little discussion about rate-setting methodology. And really, when we set rates, we're developing a long-term financial plan. For you all, that was the next five years. And you'll notice a graphic on the right-hand side of your screen. The red side really indicates all of our requirements that we want to fund over the next five years: operating and maintenance expenses, capital, capital reinvestment, debt service requirements, reserve needs, and compliance issues. But really, for the most of the utilities that I work for, capital and reinvestment is really the biggest item that's, you know, and that's really what's the biggest driver of a need for rate increases. So on the other end, we want to come up with the balancing act where we target, hey, we've come up with, here's our requirements, here's what we want to fund over the next five years. Then we go and look at our revenues and say, well, how can we get there? And we don't want to get there every one year. We want to come up with a balanced plan that meets our needs over that same horizon or that forecast period. And that's kind of the basis of how we would develop a financial plan and develop how we're going to fund that plan. Next slide, please. The next slide really talks about the two scenarios. The first scenario, which is the proposed scenario, that's what we're recommending, the 10% rate adjustment in fiscal year '24. There has been estimates that were made for the remainder of the forecast period, fiscal year '25 through '28, which you'll see on your screen. Those are not being brought forward for recommendation at this time. It's a part of developing the plan. And then you'll see the alternative plan that we were asked to evaluate and to compare and contrast what would be some of the impacts from taking this alternative rate plan of a 6% rate adjustment for fiscal year '24, and then we've assumed 5% rate adjustments for fiscal year '25 through '28. Now, a couple of things that make, we wanted to keep constant and have goals for each one of these scenarios. Goal number one is to fully fund our capital improvement program, $168 million over the next five years. That includes $50 million of neighborhood improvements, Sandcastle, Hardup Boynton, Central Seacrest Corridor, water treatment plan improvements of 100, excuse me, water system improvements of 100, excuse me, $64 million in total, approximately $34 million of wastewater improvements, and then the remaining balance for stormwater reuse and miscellaneous studies. Additionally, we wanted to maintain prudent levels of reserves. And when we look at reserves, we like to really break it out into two buckets: operating reserves and capital reserves. Operating reserve is there really for an emergency, think a hurricane. Hurricane, if you have major repairs with hurricanes, they're going to be booked as an operating expense. They're not going to be capitalized, and it can cause compliance issues with your debt. And on the other side, we want to have capital reserves for, let's say, a sinkhole under the water plant, or a lift station that has a major malfunction. We need to have monies that we can appropriate for those emergency capital situations. We also want to increase pay-go capital funding. And really what that is, is funding that capital reinvestment on an annual linear basis from rates, offsetting the need for debt service potentially to fund these improvements as time goes on. And we want to limit and reduce the risk, financial risk to the system. And all these things are kind of intertwined. Next slide, please. What you're seeing on screen now is a graphical comparison of our forecasts and our revenues and our operating expenses. Now, there's two bars on operating expenses. The dark blue bar represents a projection of our actual operating expenses, our debt service payments that must be made, and our transfers. And then you'll notice a yellow bar. That's the amount that we want to set aside to reinvest in infrastructure in the system, renewals and replacements, dealing with regulatory issues, and helping to fund that capital improvement plan and really reinvest in maintaining the high-quality service that we provide to your, that you provide to your constituents. Then you'll notice that there's also two lines. There's a solid green line and a dotted red line. The solid green line is our proposed 10% rate adjustment plan. The red line is our alternative 6% plan. Now, the difference, the delta in between those two lines, on a cumulative basis over the forecast, that represents approximately $30 million in difference in total revenue. Without that difference, we would need to seek alternative funding sources for that portion of the capital plan, approximately $30 million of capital. And what we've assumed for the purposes of these scenarios is that delta would be funded from additional debt issuances borne by the utility system. Next slide, please. The next slide that I'm showing you is a depiction of how do we compare on just a depreciation funding basis. Now, let me take a step back. Depreciation, if we were to install a lift station for $10 million, and we depreciated it over 10 years, every year we would, we would experience $1 million of depreciation expense on that asset. And it's really tying the use of the asset to the expense that's incurred on an annual basis. Now, remember, depreciation is really based on historical installed costs, but when that light, when that asset reaches the end of its useful life, we're going to have to replace it. However, we're not going to be able to replace it for the same cost. It's going to be greater, right? Because costs have increased. We've had the impacts of inflation on our capital improvement plan, and those replacement costs are going to be significantly higher than depreciation. Now, just to give you a feel of where you're at, your fiscal year 2022 audited depreciation expense was approximately a little over $13 million for that, just for fiscal year '22, and that number is continuing to increase as time goes on. Now, you'll notice that there's two bars, one yellow, one blue. The yellow bar is our proposed 10% plan. This shows you how much pay-go cash that we are generating on an annual basis to reinvest into our system. Now, you'll note that even in fiscal year '24, right now, we're projecting that we're only going to be able to generate approximately $7 million, which is still less than the depreciation expense that we had last year. So right now, we are not fully funding even the replacement cost of our assets, and that's why we've been a little, you know, we've recommended slightly higher increases to start is because we want to get to a point to we can, to where we can at a minimum offset our depreciation expense, set aside monies for capital reinvestment, reinvestment into our system, and go in the right direction. But we don't want to do it overnight, right? Because that would have rate shock to our customers, and we want to mitigate that to every extent possible. And one other thing to note is you'll also notice a green line up there at the top. That's, this is the median for AA credit utilities, which is a very strong credit rating. And you all have a very strong credit rating on your utility right now. Right now, you're AA. The median for AA would put us at putting almost $19 million aside every single year for capital reinvestment. Right now, we're significantly lower than that. So our goal is to exceed depreciation, but also to get up closer to our peers, to get it to a prudent level of reinvestment. And building up that reinvestment level also helps us because it reduces the risk on our system, because we have more cash available to reinvest into our assets, and it reduces the need for us to issue debt on the system, which also, you know, reduces our financial stability in the system and increases our potential risk because we have more coverage requirements on the system. We are using operating revenues to fund that debt service and that debt service interest cost on those loans. And we want to try to get away from that, but we want to do it gradually over our planned period, planning forecast horizon, really the next five years. Then you'll notice the blue bars, which are alternative scenario. So under our alternative scenario, we're able to set aside approximately $5 million for capital reinvestment, so less than half of our annual depreciation expense from last year. And as time goes on, you're not seeing as large of an increase with those rate increases. Plus, we've had to issue additional debt to offset that need, where we were generating cash that was going to pay for capital. Now, we've had to use debt. So the repayment of those debts has also brought that amount of pay-go funding down as well. And the cumulative effect is really by the end of the forecast, we're talking about still not being able to even fund depreciation nor get close to our medians or our comparables to other similarly rated utilities. Next slide, please. This chart, which I know you all have seen before, this is a comparison of both our existing rates and the both plans rates, the proposed 10% plan and the alternative plan. You can see that the, our existing rates are approximately $52, and with a 6% adjustment, and this is just water and sewer bills only, is 50, I can't see that from here, I think it's $55, and the proposed 10% rate adjustment plan would push us up to $57 per month, and this is assuming 5,000 gallons of monthly use. Now, in comparison to our other neighboring peers, pure utilities, even under the proposed plan, we would still be approximately $19 less per month on average than our other utilities. So we're still going to be very competitive. One thing to note that we also added on here was we did try to indicate the utilities that we are aware of, that either do CPI adjustments, meaning that they're going to adjust their rates coming up next week with the onset of fiscal year '24, or are either involved in a rate study at this time, or have issued an RFP for a rate study within the last three months. So those utilities as well will more than likely be raising their rates, pushing that average up higher, continuing on to make our rates competitive in comparison. Next slide, please. The next slide that you're seeing, these are our existing and proposed rates, and we have both the fiscal year '23 rates, along with three alternatives, 10% increase, 8% and 6%. You have a very consistent rate schedule as compared to most Florida utilities. You have a base charge, which is billed, you know, every single month, whether you've used a gallon of water or not. And then you have a volumetric inclining tier structure where we bill based on usage, and as the usage goes higher, the rates increase as well once you reach those thresholds. And then you have an outside-city separate structure, which is consistent with the inside-city structure, but it does include a 25% surcharge. That 25% surcharge is a statutory requirement that we cannot go above 25%, and you all are doing that right now. That's very consistent. I really see that everywhere, every, you know, basically every city, if they're providing outside-city service. Finding that surcharge is normally there, and it's really there to kind of mitigate the risk of providing service outside your municipal boundaries. Next slide, please. On this slide, you'll notice that we have also shown our existing and potential fiscal year '24 wastewater rates, consistent structure with water. We have a base fee and then a volumetric fee. Main difference is that on residential service, the volumetric charges are capped at 7,000 gallons per month. This is also very, very consistent to have a residential wastewater cap in place, just basically saying that, hey, over 7,000 gallons, we're assuming that's outdoor discretionary use, and we're going to cut off the, what point that we're going to continue to bill you for those rates. So that's also very normal, and it's really reflective of the service that's being provided. So I think it's a really good thing to have in place. And then you'll notice the second table on the slide presents the potential additional revenues that would be generated in fiscal year '24 from these probable or potential rate increases, where the 10% rate increase would have produced approximately $5 million of additional rate revenues. 8% would be four, and 6% would be approximately $3 million additional. Next slide, please. This slide really represents an example bill of what a customer would see, and we wanted to show you an example bill as well, because it also includes stormwater service, which was not shown on our rate comparison previously. And as you can see, the, I can't see it from here, but I know that with a 10% rate increase, the average, thank you, Pranam, the average customer right now is paying approximately, let's say, $740 on an annual basis. Now, with the 10% increase, we'd see that, that bill increase by approximately $75 on an annual, on an annual basis, down to $44 for the 6% rate adjustment. And we also added 8% as a comparison in there as well. So you're looking at the total impact to a potential customer from either one of these alternatives, being in between $75 on an annual basis for a 10% adjustment, down to $44 on an annual basis for the alternative 6% plan. Next slide, please. Couple of other things that we wanted to, we were, we, I was asked to present about was financial assistance programs that are available to our constituents should they have any hardships. There's two primary programs right now that are in place, one through the county, and then one through a faith-based organization, the Hardup Boynton Residents. Both of them, we've provided the information here, and staff has indicated that we are going to work to make, do additional outreach, to do either bill mailers and put the information on our website, so that if customers do have issues with hardships, they'll be able to locate these programs and apply for them going forward. Next slide, please. So to finalize, I'd like to make my recommendations. I am still recommending that the city consider adopting a 10% rate adjustment plan and to continue to monitor the need for future rate adjustments in the future. I believe they're coming. And I think really buying into the plan is how do we fund that reinvestment into the system? How do we maintain our infrastructure? And how do we put ourselves on the path to maintain financial stability, you know, by developing a prudent and reasonable pay-go funding plan to... to offset just the cost of depreciation and to limit the need to, to issue additional debt to fund our capital plan as time goes on. And as we know, capital has gotten extremely expensive. We've seen a lot of growth in capital costs down here, especially in the South Florida, you know, area. And so as we go forward, you know, we want to make sure that we've developed those funding mechanisms to allow to maintain that system. Additionally, we're going to look at alternative revenue sources. Right now, we are looking into miscellaneous fees to make sure that they are fully recovering the cost of providing those individual services. We've discussed looking at impact fees as another area that we could focus on to try to identify if there's additional revenues, although those are one-time revenues. They could also be available to potentially offset some of those needs. But on a combined basis, those two items, they're only make up about less than two million dollars a year of annual recovery. So as we talk about, you know, our total difference between those two plans potentially being as great as thirty million dollars over the next five years, even with a large increase in either one of these, we're still going to need rate increases to help to push us in the right direction. And then additionally, another thing to consider is that staff is actively seeking grants right now. They're in the process of either securing or applying for approximately thirty million dollars in grants, which have been reflected in the funding plan for your capital improvement plan. Going forward, we are going to continue to refine our capital improvement plan, identify where those areas are, that are really critical. And we're going to do that through master plans, conditions, condition assessments and identifying project criticality. So that way, as we go forward, we're working to, to bring that plan forward and bring it back to you on an annual basis to get your buy-in in the direction of how we're investing those monies, how we're reinvesting in our system and how we're meeting the needs of our constituents. And then lastly, we want staff and you all to buy into developing this long-term capital funding plan where we recognize that, hey, we need to reinvest in our own system through rate revenues for paying for the infrastructure that we're buying and that we're replacing on an annual basis. And, you know, using that potential debt only where it's necessary. And, you know, for large one-time improvements, assets with long service lives, assets that are going to provide a long-term benefit to the system. Next slide. Thank you very much for your time.
Ryan, and I can answer questions. If there are any questions.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Punam. We're going to open the floor now for questions and comments for Ryan and Punam, after which we'll entertain public comment. After that, we'll come back to the commission for further discussion and voting. Let's begin on my left, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I don't necessarily have any questions. You know, I think that, I think it was good for us to kind of have this kind of refresher presentation from the last one. You know, and since the last meeting, I've gone back and looked at, you know, the notes and talked to staff. And I think it's important that we, we look out for the constituents on different levels. We look out for them budget-wise, but we also have to look out for them in service-wise. We've had a couple of instances in the last year with, with sewer, sewer issues or, and pipes breaking and emergency services that we weren't in the plan. And so I think it's important that we look at, you know, one of the things that I said at the last meeting was we've gotten this habit of, for the last three years, and because of COVID and, and trying to help the residents by not increasing this utility fund. And I think it has done us a disservice because now we're looking at having to really play catch-up. You know, and so, you know, we, we have to make sure that we're providing the residents with services as well and that we make sure that we're being responsible in that way, but also to our employees. And, you know, they, they also rely on us to make sure that we're being responsible, to make sure that they're taken care of as well. And so, so Mike, those are kind of, I'm going to leave my comments at that, but I support the moving forward 10%. And then seeing in the future how we can adjust that, if we can, to, to save the residents. But I think in this instance, we really have to move forward with how we can better serve the residents with infrastructure updates and making sure that we're repairing things and that we're getting ahead instead of always like playing catch-up or being proactive instead of reactive. And I think that it's important that we, that we kind of, we get back into that proactive instead of being reactive to, to these issues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hay.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Kelly without repeating all that she said. I would like to say that the citizens that I've spoken with and based on, on the history that I've had with this city, Boynton Beach, citizens like the high value that they place on the services received from the city of Boynton. And they're willing to pay for those services, the ones that I've talked with. And I think 10% is reasonable. I, I do feel that I was encouraged to hear that you have two alternative in financial assistance. That will help to those that, that have hardship cases. And we're constantly looking for ways to even extend that assistance through grants and, and all the other things. So, and to keep our, I think you said double A rating, you know, we, we want to maintain all of those things. But at some point, we're going to have to bite the bullet and realize that those services is going to cost you. It's not a tremendous amount of difference as I see between the 10% and the 6% plan. The, even the, the impact fees is, is another source of, of trying to relieve the, I don't want to say pressure, but leave the pain of, the cost, the pain out. But that's a small amount, but it still helps. Every little bit helps. And so at, at this juncture, I'm in favor of the 10% for all of the reasons stated. And I, I, I do think we need to, at some juncture, need to be able to maintain an appreciation. Right now, we can't do that based on the, the numbers that, that you just presented. But down the road, I see that happening with this move. So based on that, I am in favor of the 10%.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. I'm going to turn now to our Vice Mayor.
Thank you for your presentation. Looking at that difference in the water bill is extremely helpful. And I think it was like two, $2.50 monthly in order to see a multimillion dollar gain for CIP. That's a, that's definitely appetizing. My, you know, my, my concerns are, you know, let's say we go with 10%, right? And, and one of the talking and discussion points is that CIP funding. You know, I just want to make sure that, that there's follow-through with that. You know, for example, the Chapel Hill stormwater improvement, this is two years in a row. You know, I've had to have discussions about that being pushed back, right? And so when I think about the residents and I think about, you know, my constituency and having to have that dialogue around raising these rates in terms of seeing an increase in service, I need to see that, you know, I don't need to be fighting to get a project done that's been budgeted for years. And then I'm sitting here, you know, having to vote on an increase, you know, and then going back to my constituency and saying, hey, you know, you know, we, we raise your rates, but we're still not able to get this project done. So, you know, I'm, I, I think about for myself, right? If I'm, you know, $2.50 a month, but then I'm going to see, you know, stormwater improvements, is that worth, worth it? Yeah, I think so. But I need to know and I need to have certainty that there's going to be that follow-through and increase in service. And I understand that there's a lot of obstacles. We've discussed this. You know, as far as material goes, product management, you know, there's, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's made things difficult over the last few years. But I think just, you know, to be able to have that transparency and integrity with my constituency, I need to know that there's going to be follow-through with that. And it's not just, hey, you know, we're, we're doing this, you know, here are the talking points, let's move forward. You know, and the other, the other talking point I want to discuss is, you know, we talked about the sewage pipe, right? Like the, the, this problem is a little bit bigger too, right? I think we need to be mindful of the density and all the development that we're having in the city, right? And so that way, you know, we want to be proactive, right? And sometimes being proactive is loosening on the throttle with how fast we're developing, especially if our infrastructure can't handle that. And so I think, and, and that's like, and that's not just for the residents too. Like I think that's for like utilities, right? In any department, as we grow as a city, you know, there's more workload. And so I just, I say that for my colleagues to be mindful of that, you know, in the future. So, you know, we don't have to make drastic changes like this, you know, we can loosen up on the throttle. You know, at this point in time, I definitely want to hear whatever public comment there is. But again, you know, what's appetizing for me is that seeing that large increase in CIP funding. I just need to have reassurance and certainty that that's going to happen, right? Because if I'm a resident and, you know, I have a conversation, you know, with my representative and they tell me, hey, you know, there's going to be an increase, but here's why, right? And, and these are the, these are some of the projects that are going to happen, that are going to help fund, you know, that increase is going to fund, you know, I want to be able to see that and not, and, and I want to see that follow-through. So that's just my, my concern and my only hesitation is I just need to have reassurance that there's going to be that follow-through. But I think it is important, you know, unfortunately, we're all sitting here to make this decision. Not going to play the blame game, but we've seen the increases in the last years. You know, it's nothing compared to what's being proposed to us, you know, right now. And, you know, I think we're just have, we have a decision to make with some heavy lifting. And, you know, my last comment is for the, you know, I don't know if I could swallow a 10% this year and next year. I think that's something to be mindful about, you know, and, and looking, you know, looking at that chart, I, I think there's definitely some wiggle room for future years. Maybe this year we need to go a little bit higher, but I think, you know, fiscal year 25, 26, you know, let's, let's see. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily want to make that decision, you know, right now, and I know we're not. But that's just, you know, that's just my two cents on, on the, the forecasted increase. But again, you know, I, I definitely have an appetite because of that CIP. But I just want to see what the rest of my colleagues think and what the public input is. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're going to turn now to Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you for your presentation. I know we're here today because we had a long discussion at the last meeting about the rate increases. And I know we've talked about this a lot today. There's a few things that I wanted to mention and, you know, when we were talking about, when, you know, when you were making that presentation, something that was consistently repeated was we need to make our rates competitive. And we're comparing our rates to other counties. The income in the city of Boynton Beach is significantly lower than it is for the county and than it is for many other of our nearby municipalities, as well as St. Louis County and many other counties that we're compared to. So when we, we compare, we should definitely be mindful of comparing not just the costs of the rates, but also the income of the residents. The reason why I'm fighting for this is because a lot of my constituents are senior citizens who are living on fixed incomes. And although, you know, it might not be a significant change for someone like us that are currently still in the workforce, for somebody on a fixed income, it does make a significant change. I do completely understand and agree with the need of building or funding for our future infrastructure. It's something that we need to have. It's not some, it's not a want, it's definitely a need. At the same time, I want to look at opportunities for us to gather more funding so that we, last time we talked about eight million dollars that are sent from the utilities fund to the general fund. Four of those million are used for administrative fees. And the other four million are charged as a franchise fee to the city, the same way that we charge, for instance, FPNL. I, I'm going to stick to what I said last meeting and I do not agree with the fact that we charge ourselves a franchise fee as we are the city. And we should be more mindful of how we're spending our funds with capital improvements. I 100% understand that, you know, it's a 31-year-old infrastructure. I'm not sure what the useful service life of our infrastructure really is. So going forward, I would like to request two items for future meeting. We mentioned thirty million dollars in capital in grants that we're applying for. Right now, I would like an update on the grants that we're applying to, which one is it? What the timeframe for that is, just for the, hello? For the public to know that we're seeking alternative funding sources to try not increase utilities on them at such a significant rate. And then the second thing I'd like to ask for is to build an inventory of infrastructure, to make a decisive plan with a timeline, with a timeline, so we know if we're going to be increasing rates at a certain percentage. We want to make sure that we're using those funds for infrastructure and not sending this to the general fund for, you know, other purposes. I really, really want to refrain from sending too much money back to the general fund. I'm not in favor of that. I'd rather keep the money in the utilities or within the capital improvement side so that we can use the money for the purpose that we're claiming that we're using the money for. One more thing that I wanted to look into was when we talk about a 10% versus a 6% increase in the rates. I see that we had a representative from SEIU talking about, you know, with the blue collar employees and the white collar employees. Would a 6% increase have any effect in any way, shape or form on employees?
It's a total expense is a total operation, operational expense does include personnel. We will always pay our employees and whatever we've, whatever has been bargained for, we will pay that. So not, we're not going to decrease that. So in that sense, there won't be an impact directly. But then other things we'll have to start looking at what, what can't we do? What are the services that we may not be able to do or what capital project we may have to delay or defer? So that's how usually initially it'll work. Ultimately, if we don't, then it will catch up. We won't be able to get the FTEs we need or provide the competitive salaries. So we'll have to start capping some of those things to be able to live within whatever the revenue we produce.
Okay. Just wanted to state a fact for the record. We did approve collective bargaining agreements for SEIU for both our blue collar and our white collar this year. And we gave generous raises, so I just wanted to keep that in mind. It's not, you know, the goal or the purpose to not take care of our employees ever. So just wanted to put that out there for the record. Yep, that's it. Just, I, I would not want to see a 10% increase. I think I've, I've said it before, I'll say it again. I do understand the need for infrastructure, but again, repeating two items that I would like to see at a future agenda to be added is the specificity with the thirty million dollars in grants that we're applying to, what the timeframe for that is, the application. And then if we do get the grants or not, I do want to hear back, feedback on, on what the results were. And then most importantly, building an inventory of infrastructure so we can make a timeline with decisive plan of, you know, when we're going to spend the money to do these, you know, like which projects specifically we're looking at in the next five years. I think that would, you know, definitely justify the reason for us, increasing that. And one last thing I wanted to add was I know that the rates for FPNL have increased. I think it's about a 20%. I know we charge, you know, FPNL the same fee that we charge the city. Since the fees have increased, I want, that's something I spoke to the city manager earlier on a phone call, but I wanted to put it out there. Can we look to maybe get those funds back for the amount that, you know, we're being increased for? And maybe sending that money to the general fund and try to find- And maybe sending that money to the general fund and try to find ways that we don't have to continue to increase our rates, you know, in the future. I I do understand that today we're only voting on fiscal year '24. And as we're looking at the future, we have five years of of potential planning. But we're not deciding on those future years yet. We're only looking at fiscal year '24. So I am going to stick with my 6%. I do not support a 10% increase. I I've spoken to a lot of residents and they're not happy about it, especially, you know, my my senior citizens, my residents, they're not, they're not happy about the potential rate increases. And even neighbors in my own neighborhood are not happy about it because everything's been going up. And it's not just for them, it's for the city as well. So I do understand that. But I will, I will not be supporting a 10% increase. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I I do see the hand up of our Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, any questions?
So so I know, like, I understand the hesitation with the 6% for staff. And like I see, you know, I don't, I personally, like, 10% is steep. So like, what I would propose, and I saw this in the presentation, what is, let me ask this first. What is staff's, what is staff's thought on that 8%? Say we split the difference. Is 8% manageable? Is that a good starting point?
So from staff's perspective, just looking at everything that Ryan's presented, I would still be really pushing for 10% just knowing that if we don't start moving in that direction, it'll be harder, it'll be a harder hole. It's a deeper hole that we're digging ourselves into. Will we, you're the policymakers, whatever you decide, whatever direction you give us, we will work with that. So our job is to try and make the best of what we're given. And that's what we, our commitment is to our customers to give the best service we can provide. So we're going to continue doing that. Based on what Brian had presented, initially, it was actually more than 10%. If you recall, way back when we were talking, and I recall the commission asking me that why aren't we increasing it to what the REIT consultant is saying? And we said, no, we want to try and make it into a little bit more easier path for our residents. So we'll go slowly, we'll increase little by little every year and have till we get to a point where we can only do CPI, we need to do only CPI adjustments. That's what the goal is. So I would still say that it'd be a hardship, but we'll work with whatever you all want on. Corrections on. I did want to address, Mayor, one thing that Commissioner Cruz had asked. The inventory, we are working on asset management program. What we what we're also doing is we have a consultant engaged right now to look at what we call a risk matrix. So which is basically looking at all our infrastructure. And that'll involve all our frontline employees also, talking to everybody, looking at our data of any breaks we've had, any leaks we've had, any repairs we've made, and sort of look at what are, what is the highest risk now for us and how can we prioritize? So that'll provide us a list of which are the priority projects we need to do. So that, once we finish that project in the next few months, I think it's going to take us six months or so to do that. We'll bring that back to the commission.
And and can can you just speak on my concern about the follow through and follow up with some of these CIP projects? And again, I completely understand, you know, you know, bandwidth supplies, you know, project management. But I just, you know, I need to hear on the record, you know, that being addressed.
We are committed. We are committed to make sure that whatever the roadblocks are for our CIP, we keep moving those things forward. We've had those conversations with our staff, working on those with our consultants. We hired a new Assistant Director of Utilities Engineering. He's going to help us look at the CIP more closely. So so we're going to, we're doing all of those things. So you, we are committed to make sure that we are doing the projects as we are proposing to the commission. We'll keep giving you updates. That's that's my commitment. I'm hoping that we never have to come back and say we have to push this any forward. But we'll give you reasons and justification if we do that and at least let you know. So if you have questions, I can definitely sit down and go through the whole CIP with you or particular projects as you want.
Yeah, I appreciate that because I just, and again, from from a residence lens, you know, they're not, you know, nearly as involved as city staff or, you know, us here on the dais. So, you know, it's extremely subjective, that lens. So to see it an increase, you know, and to hear about projects, but then not seeing those projects get done, I think it's it's important that there's that communication piece. And, I mean, people need to see something, you know. No one likes excuses, you know, we we can understand them, staff can understand them, the departments can understand them, but, you know, everyday residents that maybe aren't not as involved don't see it that way, in my opinion. And so I I think trying to understand and find find that gap and and close that gap, I think, is important, especially with with something like this. So, you know, at this point, I still undecided, want to hear from, you know, the community, but I I think the most, for me, the important piece is understanding that and knowing that, you know, if there is an increase, that we're going to see a difference, you know, because I might know that there's a difference. I'm aware, you know, but the 22,000 people in my district may not know that. And so I think it's important, you know, that they can see that. Because then, then I I I see my tax dollars going to work and I'm okay with that increase. So that's my only hesitation and, you know, you know, I I have, I have to bring that forward.
What what we are planning on doing is, one thing we can do is we can lay out our CIP as to by the year. So sometimes there are multiple years, these projects sometimes go multiple years. So there may be a design year, and then you're going to have to bid it out, and then you start construction. So we'll lay it out like that. So it's a little bit more obvious what we are going to be doing and when we are going to be doing for each project. So I am asking our staff to go back and revisit. Also, sometimes between the planning and construction, if there is a little bit of gap, especially with this inflation, that that's hit us, the cost of each project goes up. So then you have to look at, okay, which project now, well, we haven't started, that may have to be deferred at least another year. So sometimes that may have happened in the last two years, but we are getting to the point where we are able to analyze that data a little bit more and be able to provide it in a way, in a format that you can see which year what we are going to be doing. So that will be a little bit more obvious when that that project will be in the ground.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are now going to turn to the public comment on this item. If you would like to speak specifically on these rate increases or proposed rate increases, now's the time to approach the podium. After we hear those in the chambers, we will go to those online. As always, state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Hi, Susan Oyer. I'm off Boynton Beach Seacrest Estates. I'm all for the 10%. I just had a few things. Let's see, what did I want to say here? We have an issue. We have sewage bubbling up in the 500 Ocean Building. And I know that because I've been sent the video. I brought it up with Colin a few years ago. I brought up the thing that you all really need to get your, your your rep in Tallahassee to get the whole 25% cap taken away because we need to be charging the outside of Boynton Beach people, the 10 cities approximately that we give water to, they should be paying significantly more. I also think that the rates are what they should be. We need to be very cognizant of we're going to get slapped with a big fine. Who's going to pay that fine if there's no money sitting there? So we need to be prepared for that federal fine for the sewage. We also, I, and I guess you all haven't been paying attention all these years. But, and I know Commissioner Hay has and and Mayor Penzerga has. But Colin had a whole, whole inventory done, and he had a whole plan to rejuvenate and replace. And what the heck happened to that? Colin walked out the door and it was there and it was set. And this is a couple of years ago. So I don't know what happened when Colin left, but apparently all that disappeared. I will say that I'm very happy to hear our city employees are getting a well-deserved good raise. Hopefully, it's as good as Commissioner Cruz says it is. I will say that this 10% raise amounts to $6 and I figured it out, 27 cents. I think I can handle that. I don't drink Starbucks, but if I was a Starbucks drinker, I would drink one less a month and I could afford the difference. So I I will also say that, you know, if we're looking to really make a difference here, why are we not taking some of your community funds and offsetting this cost? Or look at that HSA raise that you want to give yourselves of $3,700. And if you divide that by the $72 per year that this will work out to for the average house at the base rate, that's 51 people's difference you could pay in their bills with the HSA that you all want to give yourselves. So thank you. Please do 10%.
Thank you. Next speaker?
David Katz, 67 Midwood Lane. For a six-pack of Stella, I would have told you exactly what that gentleman told you instead of what you're paying him. It's just, I mean, he's absolutely right at everything he said. This is my bill. I fall into that average, $75 a year increase, $6.25 a month. I've got no problem with it. I think that your staff is professional. And this commission at the last meeting kind of tried to put their foot on the back of their necks. And I don't think that they meet in a secret place and have a seance to try to sabotage the commission like a commissioner from District 1 suggested.
Mr. Katz, you will refrain from those comments. You will direct all your comments specifically on these rates.
Well, that's just too bad.
This is the topic.
That's right. Well, she, but she, she accused everybody of that.
That's Mr. Katz. Focus on the comment. This is your warning.
This is your warning. Okay.
Your time has expired. Your time has expired. No, sir, your time is all right. That was a racist comment. But I expected nothing different. We're going to move on. Are there anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right. With that, public comments are now closed on this item. I'm going to turn back now to our city commission for any questions or comments, either for staff or to our consultant here, Ryan. All right, let's begin. Commissioner Kelly.
Mayor, I don't have any other questions. I just wanted to make a motion to approve the resolution with the 10% increase.
I will second that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion here from Commissioner Kelly for the approval of this resolution, R23-134, with the 10% increase.
I just, can I make one quick comment?
Absolutely.
Just to piggyback on Vice Mayor, Turk and I agree, the accountability and knowing that, you know, I mean, we're all taxpayers up here too, and, you know, to know that the money is going where it should be and that we, you, you know, we have to be accountable to the residents too. And so, you know, I'm glad to see that, you know, utilities on top of that. And I think, you know, us hearing it in in public forum, it's one thing also for us to hear it when we meet with staff, but for the public to hear it on a regular basis too is important. So, thank you.
Couldn't agree more. All right, we had a motion, and we have a second from Commissioner Hay. Is there any further discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving proposed resolution number R23-134 with the 10% rate increase, say aye. Aye. All those who oppose, say no.
No.
All right, so the motion passes four to one with Commissioner Cruz dissenting. All right. We're now going to move on to item 10B. Item 10B is the proposed resolution number R23-120, adopt the final budget for the general fund and all other funds for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Are there any updates from our finance director? If there is, please come up and
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mara Fredericksen, Director of Financial Services. Seeing as the rates remain at the 10%, there are no updates to this budget at this time.
All right, thank you. We're going to pause one moment. We all appreciate all the employees here today, but we're going to wait until, all right. So if there's any questions or comments from the commission, let's begin on my right, Commissioner Cruz.
No further comments. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
No motion to approve.
Before we entertain the motion and the second, we still need public comment, all right? So I'm going to ask you to hold on to that just one moment. What about you, Commissioner Hay? Anything else?
Nothing from me.
Okay, and Commissioner Kelly?
No.
All right, let me go to public comment. As always, we must. If you'd like to speak specifically on the adoption of the final budget for the general fund and all other funds for this fiscal year, now's the time to approach the podium. As always, state your name for the record and begin when you're ready. Ms. Oyer?
Yes, thank you. Susan Oyers, Seacrest Estates. I would ask you to get rid of the HSA that is still included in the budget. That works out to $3,650, $3,850, something like that is the government governmental allowed amount. You are allowed to have as many HSAs as you want to, as long as it doesn't exceed that amount. And all of you, in theory, have jobs and you're able to get an HSA from your job as well as through the city because you are a city employee as well. So you should be taking your HSAs and having it deducted out of your pay like all the rest of us do. You should not be doing this on the taxpayer dime. This is just, I'm sorry, I found it here in my notes. $3,650 is the max amount you're allowed to do per year for the year 2023 with no amount, no restriction on the on the numbers of HSAs you could have. So potentially, all of you have two and needing a third one that's paid for by the taxpayers is not appropriate. We just heard how that 10% is going to so greatly impact everyone, that $70 per year, $72 per year. And it will truly impact some people. So, you know, if you really feel the need that you need to have $3,700 of taxpayer dollars, you know, to cover your hospital bills that your health insurance doesn't cover, and you get city health insurance plus your job, plus a free clinic here at the city, plus your pension you're getting out of this with the state because City of Boynton is FRS, then I think maybe you all should consider donating that $3,650 towards the the utility offset that will truly impact your handful of people in your in your district that so desperately need that money, that $72. So thank you. I say vote to change the budget, get rid of the HSAs, and then approve the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other speakers in the chamber, now's the time to approach the podium. I'm seeing no one else approaching the podium. With that, we're going to go to those online. Manny, do we have anybody with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
With that, public comment on this item is now closed. I'm going to turn back to the commission. The motion that was made by Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve the budget as is. Thanks.
All right, and the second back to Commissioner Hay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's begin the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
In a roll call, vote the motion passing items.
All right, thank you. And congratulations, we avoided a government shutdown.
Very good.
And we did it under seven o'clock. Or just about seven o'clock. Well, thank you, everybody. If there's nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn.
The move, second.
I don't know who said it. It was sent so quickly, but Commissioner Kelly made the motion, Commissioner Hay made the second. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the motion passes, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone, and thank you to all our staff.